Hi, everybody. This is a BST review for take three. Let me uh this over. And strap this up. Okay. You guys see that?
Yes.
Cool. Get the chat open. Okay. So let's just go through all this and then we'll create our own BST class. Let's kind of just see how it goes. Answer any questions you guys might have. So suppose you uh you insert the numbers one to 10 in that order into two data structures, an unbalanced BST and a balanced BST. For what operation in terms of big O is the unbalanced tree faster? What do you guys think? Anyone having any ideas? Any at all? At least guess. Come on. At least. A? Anyone else got a guess? Unbalanced tree is a straight line, right? It it's not almost a straight line. It is a straight line because we are entering one and 10 in order. So it's always just going to go to the right because each number is greater than the last number.
E?
So he said C?
B.
B? So then he says B. And then else got answers? So I got A and a B. One if you haven't said hasn't said something. Raj, what do you think? So, okay. Well, let's let's see. Let's uh let's let's test it out. So we're going to create a bunch of three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So this is what our tree looks like. Here we have 10, 9, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, and then 1. So if we were to insert everything into a unbalanced binary straight uh binary search tree, that's what it would look like. Now let's let's draw the balanced one. So start with 1. Now, is 2 going to go to the right or the left?
Right.
Right? Now, is 3 going to go to the right or the left of 1? Oh, wait. Sorry, I would have to literally do balancing. Never mind. This would be horrible to go through. Um. Okay. So now imagine I can't. I would not be able to think out what this would look like on my own, but just imagine they have the same amount of elements, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. They have the same amount of elements, but it's not a straight line. So now let's think. If we choose A, so we're saying searching for the number 1 is faster in the unbalanced tree versus the balanced BST. Well, let's think, how many operations does it take to search for 1 in in the uh in the balance? This is balanced. This is unbalanced. How many operations would it take for the balanced tree to find 1? 4? And also have how many numbers? How many? How many operations it would take?
Well, are you saying 1 is at the root or is that just in?
Yeah, 1 is at the root.
Oh.
So 1, okay. Anyone else? How many? If we are starting, we're starting here and we're searching for 1. How many operations would it take to find 1? It's not a trick question. Just 1. Yeah. So it'd only take 1 operation because we're already there. Now, how many would it take on the unbalanced tree? We're starting at the root. We always start at the root. That's how it always is. How many operations would it take to find it on the unbalanced tree? Also 1. So can't be A because they're the same for 1. So now let's try searching for the number 10. Right? 10 is probably somewhere down here. Probably not there, but it's somewhere down there. Now let's pretend it was there. It's probably somewhere else, but it won't. We'll find that it won't really matter. How many? How many steps would it take us to get from the root to 10? Yeah. Depends on how you count it, but you could say 1, 2, 3. I'd accept 3 or 4 depending on how you count it. Operations is kind of a vague term. But yeah, so it would take 3, about 3 or 4 depending on how you count it. So you can say we just go down the tree straight to 10. Now, how many operations would it take for the unbalanced tree? For starting at the root and we're trying to find 10? 10, exactly. You have to go all the way down. Yeah, 10 or 9, either one I'd accept. Kind of depends on how you count it. Yeah. So then searching for the number 10 can't be right. Let's try number 5 before we consider that balanced BSTs are always faster. So let's look at 5. So let's say 5 is, I don't know, right here or something. Um, so if 5 is here, how many operations would it take? And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is right here on this one. Anyone? Yeah, 2. Could say 2, you could say 3. Kinda accept either one. Yeah, so 2 operations. Go down, go down, done. Now, how many would it take on the unbalanced? So, oh, I deleted my 5. 5. So we're trying to get from 1 to 5. How many operations did it take? 4, yeah. So you can see that it still takes longer, right? Still going to take longer for 5. 4 or 5, again, either one I'll accept. Um, it really just depends on how you count it. So we can see that for 1, they're the same. For 10, very different. For 5, a little bit different. In all cases, balanced BSTs are always faster, no matter what. They'll always be faster. They will at worst be the same. Which is the case of finding 1. 1 and 2 would be the same. Finding 1 and 2 would be the same, or probably not, because I don't know if 2 would actually end up over here. I'm not sure. But there'd be no case where it'd really be faster. So, yeah. Oh, I see. It says deleting the number 5. Well, to delete the number 5. Oh, well, deleting the number 5. Okay, wait, because that requires rebalancing. So we might actually need to check that. Okay, well, it's order n to search, whereas it's log n to search on the other one. But for deleting, I believe it's log linear, is it not? I can actually double check that. I think uh deleting from a binary search tree time complexity, I believe, is it? Oh, it's order H. Yeah, so even then it's still log. So yeah, worst case event. So yeah, so yeah, so it is it is still going to be answer 3. So anyone have questions about that?
Yeah, I got a question. If it's a balanced BST, wouldn't the number 1 be all the way down to the left?
Um.
If we're putting in 1 through 10?
That would mean that oh, yeah, yeah, you actually have a good point. It would be to the left. Yeah. Hmm. Okay, you might actually be right. Yeah, you might be right. Yeah, searching for the number 1 might actually be slower with a balanced tree. I did not think of that. I don't know why I didn't think of that. I have not worked with balanced BSTs in a while. Uh, yeah, uh, you might be right about that. Well, but okay, but we're still talking about bigger. Right? It may take less operations to find 1, but uh he's saying in terms of big O. And regardless of where the 1 is, it still does not change the fact that searching for a uh searching for a uh any number in a unbalanced BST is going to be order n. And in a balanced BST, it's going to be order log. So regardless, the average case in terms of big O is still going to be faster.
Gotcha.
It is. I I I do kind of put down this question a bit in that it's giving you a specific case while asking you about big O, which you shouldn't do, because specific cases and bigger kind of go against each other. But um, yeah, that you do have. You do have a good point. Yeah, I think it actually would be faster. Um, but in terms of big O, every operation, it's always going to be balanced BSTs are faster. So, yeah. Good thinking at least. Um, for which operations is a balanced BST faster than a vector? Okay. So which ones? List which ones you guys think? 1 and 3, B and C, so 2 and 3. Anyone else got an answer? Anyone? Okay, that's 1 and 3. All right, let's see. The searching for some random item, definitely correct. If you're searching for some random item, a vector is always going to be order n. And because you have to go through the vector, right? You have to go straight across it. And in a balanced BST, it's going to be log of n, because we're going to throw away half of the numbers each time we're searching. So definitely going to be faster for searching for random item. Deleting the last element inserted. So let's think about this. So the last element inserted. Well, the last element inserted could kind of be anywhere on the balanced BST. However, we do know that deletion is in a log n um process. Uh, what is the order for a vector deleting last element? Order 1, exactly. So actually, in this case, order 1 is going to beat log n. Whoops, I just changed my answer. So order 1, so we have a vector for deleting the last element is going to delete it in order 1 because it's just doing calling a pop pack. And a a balanced BST needs to rebalance itself. So and that's going to be a log n um or at worst n um work to do. Deleting some random item. What about that for a vector? What's the what's the order for for deleting a random item? Deleting a random item from a vector. What do you guys think? Deleting just a random item from like the middle or something? We're talking about average runtime. N, yes. Now, what about deleting some random item from BST? Log n, exactly. So what what wins here? Vector BST? BST, yeah. So this one would be an instance of BST being faster. Now, printing out all the elements in sorted order. How long would that take with a both n, exactly. So this is one where they actually tie. Tacking through the vector should be faster since he's using uh um, he doesn't have to do function calls. Function calls are just slower than accessing RAM, so definitely going to be faster. Um, so yeah, that's going to be it. They're going to tie, I'm pretty sure. Despite the fact that a BST would be slower, oh, they're saying it's faster, so BST should be a little bit slower here. But not noticeably slower. Um, what line of code is missing? Oh, yeah, by the way, do you have any questions about this? Going once, going twice. What line of code is missing marked by here? USC is a standard binary tree of integers like we've talked about in class. Okay. So here, if search x return, so get rid of duplicates. Then what needs to go here? So that has to be something guarding the root equals new node return. So in in which case should we set the root to be a new node and then just end the function? What do you guys think? Yeah, if it's empty, exactly. So which case would that be? Root is null, yep. And that would be right there. If you did these 2 lines, your code would say fault. And this line just wouldn't work. And these ones, it's a fault because if root is null pointer and you try to get its data, that is dereferencing null pointer. And if you try to get this left, that is also dereferencing the null pointer. So yeah, so anyone? Anyone have questions about why that's that statement? Going once, going twice, 3 times, all right. Suppose you are in a BST of integers like the ones you talked about. Remember function that will add up all the negative values in a tree and return their sum as a result? We could do this. Does anyone want me to do this? Or we could we could write the BST because that's potentially going to cover what we need to do here. What do you guys think? Yeah, I was done in the lecture as well, so it's probably better if we just make a uh make a BST. Is we all good? I just want to make a BST? All right, I'll take that as we're good. Let's close this out. This. And I'm just gonna make main and delete that. And let's go start. Okay. So let's just create our class up here. So we're going to have a class BST. And I should not have capitalized the C there. Okay, so what do we need for a BST? Well, let's think first about what what is a BST made out of? Made uh kind of. A BST is a linked list, but 2 dimensional. But what is it? What what is each thing inside of a BST? Because I actually can't just have a BST. There's got to be something to represent each part of the BST. Notes, exactly. So we're going to need some node, and I'm just making it a struct because nodes are pretty simple. You guys seen this before? I have a struct inside of a class. And I have public down here. You guys get this? What this is doing here? It's making it so only BST, only the BST actually knows what a node is. So no other, like, we can't do something like, let's see if that works, yeah. So I can't do something like this. Node temp. Unknown type named node. Let's see how only BSTs can actually create a node, which we want, right? You shouldn't be able to just make nodes on your own. And usually with linked lists and BSTs or anything that uses like nodes, it's nice to have your node class inside of the private section of the BST or whatever you're making. So what is a node? What should a node have? All right, let's think about um let's think about you know? This is what our BST looks at. Let's take this node, for example. Say it has the number 32 in it. What does it need? Right and left pointers, exactly. So it's going to need pointers. Left. Right. And notice I had to type the asterisk on both of these. So if I if I just do, if I do it like this, some people do it like this. Only left is an actual pointer here. So we do actually have to put the asterisk on both of them. Yep, I need data as well. Do you guys want to do templated or non-templated? We could just use since. What do you guys think? Template? All right, let's do it. So we need to create a template. I'll call it t. So then what is the data going to be? Actually have data. What type is it? T, yes. All right, and then that's pretty much it. You could also create, well, actually, we don't really need a constructor because what we can do is we could do something like node temp is equal to, and then we could give in, you know, left, right, data like that. And that'll declare a node. So let's see if that works. Yep. All right, now, what things does our BST need in our private section? And I think Raj said it earlier. Root, exactly. So that's going to be another node pointer root, and we'll set it to null pointer by default. All right. So now are we set? We ready to start working on making this an actual BST? So I guess uh what function you guys want to start with? Because we got to do, let's see. Got to do insert. Got to do uh search. Should turn false now. Uh, we got to do, we won't do remove. I guess we could do remove. Yeah, sure, let's do it. Do delete. Oh, we can't call delete. Uh, let's go remove. And since these are templated, we don't actually know what's going to be in there, so you should probably do by reference. Constrference. All right. And then and new data. So when do you guys want to write first? Kind of have to write insert first, right, don't we? Although what we could also do is print. All right, what do you guys think? What do we need to start with insert? What's what's the first thing we should check about the tree when we're trying to insert? Exactly. We should check if the root is null. If the root is null, what do we need to do? And we just did this in the competency exam. Return 0? So what if the if the tree is empty, then we just quit? Create a new node and set it to new data, yeah. So what what should that look like? Right, because we not we need to set the root to something. Ah, okay. So we can't just set it like, does this work? Would this work? Exactly. So this won't work because root is a node. New data is a T. You can't just set a node equal to a T. So remember that we should be newing data because the root is a pointer. If we don't new data, then once this function ends, it's just going to delete itself. So we need a new node. So we need a new node. And then we're using the implicit constructor. Now, that's, what's important about this is that new data or what we put in these curly braces has to match the ordering that's here. So what should go before new data, right? You should have two other things here. See how I have it here? Left and right pointers. What should the left and right pointers be? Null and null. Yes, David, nice. So we'll set those equal to null pointer and null pointer. And boom. Is that all we need to do? The answer is, it kind of depends on if you write an else here or not. I don't feel like writing else there, so we're just gonna end the function when we create the new node. Felt like good so far to everybody? I'll take that as a yes. So uh, now that we have a new node, let's say that the root is declared, what do we need to do? Somebody just explain to me in English what we need to do. Anyone care to explain? Can, yeah, compare it to root and then add to either left or right side. Kind of, but that will only work if the root is the only node. So let's say we have, uh, something like this. And say number 32 is here, say 33 is over here, 31 is over here. 30. Um, well, there's not exactly another number that can be there. Let's put a, let's put 30 over here. And 31 would be over here. And let's say we wanted to insert the number 34, alright? So we're starting at the root. We, we need to like, we need to be able to move across wherever we need to go, right? Need to be able to like, start at one place and then move on to the next place. What do we need to be able to do that? Like I was drawing this arrow pointing to the node as we, as we move along the BST, this arrow is gonna move along. Operator, not sure what you mean by that. So, so what is that arrow? What, what, what represents that arrow that is moving along? No one knows? We need a node. Need to, we need a node, we need a node pointer to be able to traverse the list, right? The only way we can traverse the list is without changing the list is if we have some kind of pointer that we can use to move around it. Right? That make sense? Or we're gonna, whoever's gonna start at the head. That's why I set it equal to head. Oh, yes, sorry, yes. I was gonna start at the root. Everyone get that? And have questions about that? Is that a yes, as in you're having a question, or a yes, as in you're good? Okay, good. Alright, so what should we do next? Alright, we're starting at the root. What do we, what do we need? We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to loop of some, we're gonna need some kind of loop. What loop should we use here? While loop, sure. What do we need? In the while loop? While not temp. So while temp is null. Is the root ever gonna change throughout the while loop, Raj? Does temp have anything called root? Is there, is there anything called root inside of this struct? If you do that, if you do temp and then that arrow, this is your choices. You have three choices here. Anything other than these three things, there's nothing you can do. While temp is not equal to null, sure. So while temp, right, that's saying the same thing. So while temp, what do we need to do? Is it not like, what is it thinking about? Oh, yeah, capital. Lowercase. So we gotta check to the left and the right, right? So you check to the left and the right. So if temp's right. It's null. So don't we need to check something else even before this, though? Alright, we need to see if we need to decide, are we greater than or are we less than the top, right? The one that we're at. So if new data let's say, is greater than temp new, or temp data. So i- if new data is greater than temp's data, what do we need to do? Go to the right, yeah. So temp is equal to what? If you want to move to the right, what do we set 10 people to? Temp's right, exactly. So what we just did, let's say the number we entered was 34 or something, and we're starting at 32. We saw that 34 was greater than 32, so we set temp to now be whatever 32 right was, which is now 33. So now we're sitting at 33. Alright. And then what about if new data is less than temp data? What do we do? Alright, and then what if they're equal? Then what do we need to do?
Can it be equal? I thought duplicates weren't allowed.
Yeah, but that's not gonna stop someone from trying to insert duplicate. So what if it is a duplicate? Do we do? Temp one. So we found a duplicate, right? If this is true. What do you mean equals, equals root? Temp equals, equals root. Temp equals, equals root at the top. Doesn't help us. So if we found a duplicate, what do we need to do? Well, is there anything we need to do at all? Aren't we already done if it's a duplicate?
Yeah, we should be done.
Mm-hmm. It should be done. So we just return. Stop what we're doing. Let me write it up here. Hey. Why, I deleted that? Well, it would go nowhere, right? If, if you were inserting the node and it was equal to the root, then but the, remember, the node is equal to the root. We're concerned about the data, not the pointer. So the node is, starts off equal to the root. It's the node's data. So if it, if it is equal to the root's data, then that would be duplicate, we're done. Shouldn't have any duplicates inside of a BST. Okay, so now let's say we finally, like, like this is done, right? We, we've, we would have, by the time this is over, we would have reached the leaf node or wherever we are, right? So after this loop ends, temp is now null pointer. What do we need to do with temp? Delete it? So we're inserting, but we want to delete? Have we actually added anything to the BST yet? Need to insert temp value. Okay, how do we do that? Making new note, exactly. We are inserting, so we gotta make a new note. New node. Now what should go here? Null, null, and new data, right? So does this look right? That's not a rhetorical question. Does this look great? She looks right to me. So starting off, let's say we're, uh, we're inserting numbers 34, then we're gonna get to 33. And we want to insert right here, right? So 34 is right. Let's draw a null pointer, just so we can visualize null pointer. 34 is, 33 is right, starts pointing there, right? And now we've created a new node with 34, but 33 is still not pointing at it. It's still pointing to null pointer. So we need to change something here, right? We need to actually set 33's right to be this new node. So we don't actually want to do this here, alright? We gotta do this inside of the loop. Back when we still know what 33 actually is. So we need to check temp's left and temp's right. So if temp's left is not null pointer, then sure, temp can move on temp's right, or temp's left. And, uh, same with the right. But otherwise we need to create the new node. And this won't be temp's left or, or temp, but temp's right. Does that make sense? So we start at the root. While we haven't reached null pointer, if it's greater than, then we check, is the right null pointer? If it isn't null pointer, then we move on. If it is null pointer, then we now change that to be the new node. Alright? This is missing one thing, right? Because we can actually change this into a while true. We can just say That it, we can also just return, right? Because if we've inserted the node, then we're done. There's nothing else to do. So let's try implementing the search real quick. So the search should look a lot like the insert. Alright? Except. Um, we just start with the temp, right? While. Temp. So that way, if the root is null, it's just gonna return false. So while temp, we need to, uh, if. If, uh. If the key is greater than. Temp's data. Go to the right. Else if the key is less than temp's data. Go to the left. Else they're equal. And we found it. Alright, and then if it makes it to null pointer, it makes it to a leaf node, then we know it's not in there. That makes sense to everybody? So let's just try this out and see if it works. So we're gonna do. Let's create a, um, B S D of type int. Called B S D, and do B S T dot, um, what was it, insert? Call it insert, yeah. So let's insert three. And then let's see out. Search. Three. And just for fun. Also search five. Seg fault. So it said one and zero, and then it seg fault. What did we forget to do? We did not delete new, yes. So we need to write a destructor, right? Yeah, no deletes anywhere. Yeah, we should have a destructor, so. Let's create it. So we need a B S T destructor. I'm gonna show you guys. How this is all we're gonna need for a B S T destructor. Just delete root. And it comes from the fact. That we can do. That deletes everything. You guys believe me that these four lines of code delete everything? Let's try it. Even worse. Stack overflow, right? And that's because of one really simple thing I forgot. Oh, yeah, um. Should be, uh, yeah, now this is a point here. This equals null pointer. Then, um. I think return works. Oh, yeah, that's a good point. Um. It's if, uh. Oh, yeah, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be infinite looping, though. That stack overflowed somehow.
It's not done.
I saw that somewhere before and had no clue what it was. Yes, so if it were working. Uh, somehow.
I said it's not done!
Benny? You're unneeded. So. Yeah, somehow this isn't working. It's a stack overflowing. Oh, that's what it is, um. Nope, still. I'm not sure why the stack overflow is happening. But this is how you're supposed to do it. Um, so what's happening is. We delete the root. And the root is a node, right? So that's gonna call the node destructor, because a node is getting deleted. Which is going to then call it on, it's gonna then delete the right, which is also a node, which is gonna call the node's destructor. Which is then gonna call it on its right, and on its right, and on its right. And eventually it's gonna get to null pointer, and it's just gonna delete null pointer, which doesn't do anything. And then there's no destructors to call, so it should stop there. And then it's gonna delete its left, or it's gonna go all the way down that way. And it's gonna basically, it's gonna cause it to delete every combination of right and left possible, which is gonna delete everything. And then after we're done, we just delete ourselves. And this is a bottom-up delete, because it's gonna go all the way down the right, all the way down the left, and every combination between. And then after, at the end, it's gonna delete, so it's gonna like bubble up, delete. Over some reason, that's not working. Oh, it's because delete this is, um. It should be just delete right and left. Delete this is calling the node destructor on itself. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, so it's actually three lines of code. Does that make sense to everybody? It's very nice. It's a very beautiful way of deleting a B S D. Deleting B S D sounds like the hardest thing. Uh, this, so every, every object of a class has something called this, and this is a pointer to yourself. Oh, what was the intention? Uh, it was like, delete me, delete myself, but you don't have to, because the delete was already called. Yeah, so when I called delete this, it was just jumping up to the node destructor, calling it over and over and over and over and over again, which causes a stack overflow. You know, if you call the same function over and over again inside itself, it'll stack overflow. Yeah, so it's three lines of code to delete an entire B S D. Very nice. Okay. And at the same time. We've figured out that our search works, and we're also now overtime. Um, which means we didn't get to get to remove, which was the one I really wanted to get to, and print as well. Damn. Um. Maybe I'll see if, uh. I can make a video or something, a separate video for that, because this'll take longer to make these two functions. So maybe I'll, I'll make another video on it. Uh, but one important thing. For you also know is. That. Hope everybody's paying attention right now. Because that is your code for take three. Everyone see that? Closing in five, four, three, two, one, and that's it. If not, you can go back to the video and check. Yeah, um. That's all the time we have. I'll see you, I'll coordinate with Kearney. We'll try to get a video up showing programming to remove and delete. Uh, it'll be a lot simpler. Um, and just message me if you have any questions. Sorry, I couldn't get to all that other stuff. Um, but yeah. Uh, I will see you guys later. Hope you all learned something or got better in some way. Think you're a little bit more prepared, at least for the competency exam, and, uh. Yep, thank you, everybody, for watching.